Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this regular Planning Board meeting on May 22, 2025. Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Katsev?
Here.
Mr. Lilly?
Here.
Mr. Heinman?
Here.
Mr. Kamudi?
Here.
Mr. Deal is excused. Councilman Roman? Township Manager O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mayor Tamboro?
Here.
Vice Chair Sheffery-Freschi?
Here.
Chair Pearson?
Here.
Board Attorney Masara?
Here.
And Acting Board Secretary Kristin Spatola.
And thank you very much, Kristin. We really appreciate your help. Also joining us this evening is San Shavan from H2N and Dan Halbin from DMR. Demo. Okay, there's too many.
Too many.
Yeah, I'm like stuck in an acronym right now. And thank you for both joining us. Can everybody please join? You can rise for the questions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on this nation, and we will give you the floor with the reading of the adjustments tomorrow.
Ms. Spatola, can you please read the Open Public Meetings Act?
Sure.
Thank you.
The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied with respect to this meeting of the Township of Verona Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is being held in person in the ballroom of the Verona Community Center located at 880 Bloomfield Avenue, Verona. This time and date of this meeting were included in the annual meeting notice posted in the community center and sent to the official newspapers of the township, the Verona Cedar Grove Times, at least 48 hours preceding the start time of this meeting. The agenda and instructions on how to comment will be provided at the appropriate time. All meetings are recorded. Those wishing to speak during any public comment period should only provide their name and municipality. Street addresses are not required. Please be advised that should a member of the public choose to state their street address, it will not be redacted from this recording.
Thank you very much. I would open to the public, but seeing that there are no members of the public here, I will withhold from doing that. Moving on to E, approval of meeting minutes from April 24, 2025. Has everybody received a copy and read through? Any corrections, suggestions? Nothing? Can I get a motion then to pass the meeting minutes from April 24, 2025?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Katsev makes the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Lilly, seconds. All members that vote to approve? Aye.
Aye.
Does anybody abstain?
Abstained.
We have, can you just jot this down? Mr. Heinman? And Vice Chair Freschi abstained?
Okay.
Is there anyone who votes no? Okay. So all other members voted to approve.
Okay.
And it was, again, it was moved by Mr. Katsev and seconded by Mr. Lilly. Dave, can you please take over the resolutions section? I will be recusing myself from Resolution 2025-09.
So just read off the...
No. You're gonna ask if everybody's received a copy and you're gonna move in a second.
Has everyone received a copy of Resolution Number 2025-09?
Yep.
Yes.
Everybody's read?
Yes.
So resolution?
This is a memorialization.
I'll make a motion to approve as drafted.
I'll save it.
Second?
I'll save it.
Okay, Mr. Heinman made a motion to approve. Mr. Kamudi, second. All in favor?
No.
Roll. Okay, roll.
So Ms. Spatola, can you call a voice vote?
Go through the roster.
Sure.
He made the motion.
Made the motion. And Mr. Kamudi seconded the motion. Mrs. Parker was a. Mr. Katsev, a.
No, no, no. We have to go through it. So Mrs. Parker is not eligible. Mr. Katsev is the first one that's eligible.
Just call.
Yeah, just call, call their names and they'll give you a vote.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Lilly?
Well, go back to Ms. Parker.
Okay.
She's not eligible.
No, she's not eligible.
Mr. Katsev is our first.
Okay, Mr. Katsev?
Yes.
Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
Mr.?
Heinman.
Oh, he's excused.
Mr. Heinman would be next.
Yeah, he has a vote up.
Oh, okay. Mr. Heinman?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Kamudi?
Yes.
Township Mayor/Manager O'Sullivan?
He's not eligible, abstaining.
And Roman is out. And Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Freschi?
Yes.
And Chair Pearson?
I repeat, I repeat. Dave, motion passed.
The motion passes and...
Thank you. Just an announcement, that Planning Board application 2025-02, Wedgewood Drive, Block 1712 Lot 1, the hearing for tree removal, the applicant is requested to carry to the June, to the regular June 26, 2025, meeting, and no new notice is required. We'll come back to a subcommittee if we need to, but for right now, I'm gonna hand this meeting over to Mr. Halbin and Ms. Shavan.
Thank you, Chairwoman. For those of you who don't remember when I was here two years ago presenting your third round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, my name is Dan Halbin and I am a planner at DMR Architects. I wrote your third round plan, which was adopted in, I think, June of 2023. And tonight, I'm here to give you a preliminary presentation on the fourth round plan, which we have to adopt by the end of June this year. Before I start, I did send Kathleen some, the PowerPoint that I have up on here. Does anybody not have that up in front of them and would like a printout? Anybody want to print out in front of them? Okay, just thought I'd save some neck turning. All right, buttons, time to work. There we go. All right, so just for those of you who don't remember my spiel from a couple of years ago, the state of New Jersey has had an affordable housing requirement since around 1975, when a case that's now called Mount Laurel 1 came before the New Jersey Supreme Court, and then came again before the Supreme Court in 1983, and what's called Mount Laurel 2. And the outcome of those two court decisions was what we now call the Mount Laurel Doctrine, which is the idea that every municipality in the state of New Jersey is constitutionally obligated to create an opportunity for affordable housing or low and moderate income housing, and has to accommodate the growth needed to make that opportunity realistic. In 1985, a couple of years after the Supreme Court's 1983 decision, the state legislature adopted the New Jersey Fair Housing Act, which created COA, the Council on Affordable Housing. And that body's responsibility was to create rules and enforce the rules on how towns have to create housing, how many affordable housing units they have to create. And it had a consequence for those towns that didn't participate in COA's process or participated and failed to do it in a compliant way, and that is what's called exclusionary zoning litigation or builder's remedy. And what that is, is that if a town is found not to have complied with the affordable housing rules, a developer, a builder can come to court, sue the town, say it's not complying with its obligation, and essentially override the municipality's zoning powers to put a development on any property in the town that, you know, as long as it complies with state regulations and as long as it provides an affordable housing component. So COA has had created its first set of rules in 1987, what's called its first round of rules. It created its second round of rules in 1993. A lot of towns in the state complied with those rules. The second round expired in 1999. COA failed to adopt constitutionally compliant rules from 2014. It tried a couple of times and then those rules were struck down by the court substantially. 2014, it tried one last time to adopt rules and then it tied three to three voting to adopt the rules, and then it tied three to three voting to meet again, to try again, to adopt the rules, essentially ending the process of adopting its third round rules. So in 2015, an organization called Fair Share Housing Center sued COA and brought it to the Supreme Court to say, hey, COA's failed to adopt these rules, now the court should step in and ensure that every town is providing their affordable housing obligation. And that led to what's called Mount Laurel 4, a decision that resulted in hundreds of towns around the state, including Verona, settling with Fair Share Housing Center to identify what each town's municipal housing obligation was, how to address it, and forcing those towns to adopt plans. So you, Verona, settled with Fair Share Housing Center in 2021 and adopted the plan that I helped to create in 2023. And last March, the governor signed a law, it's called A5 S50, depending on who you ask, PL 2024 C2, I'll call it the fourth round rules to make things easier. And those rules essentially set the foundation for what we have to do today and what you're gonna have to do every round moving forward unless the legislature updates those, the statute. It required the Department of Community Affairs to calculate what it thinks every town has to create for affordable housing for the next 10 years, basically a period starting July of this year, ending June 30 of 2035. The DCA did that in October, and then Verona was required to decide whether it accepted the DCA's numbers by January 31st. We actually found flaws with the DCA's numbers and adopted a resolution prior to that deadline, and I'll get into the outcome of that. And now we have to adopt a plan before June 30th that shows how we are going to meet the obligation, that number that we accepted back in January. So the DCA, the state, calculated that the township had to zone for or create projects that would allow for 173 affordable housing units by 2035. We found flaws with their methodology for calculating that number, and we were able to, through a mediation process with a signed judge, bring that number down to 155 units. The state also found that Verona does not have to set aside funds to create a program to rehabilitate deficient or substandard homes in town that are occupied by or owned by, rented by low-income households. We did not challenge that number because that's a great deal. I think you had a decent obligation last round, and it was good that you didn't have one this time around. Fortunate for you, you're eligible for something called the vacant land adjustment. And what that is, is a process where we take a look at what land in town is actually vacant. We use some strategic approach to sense how much development could those lands realistically accommodate, regardless of what your zoning allows on those properties. And we determined that the vacant land in Verona can only accommodate 57 affordable housing units, based on some assumptions that I'm not gonna bore you with. However, there is a requirement that, why does this keep happening? There's a requirement that you have to, we have to plan and have projects that will have a high realistic probability of creating 57 affordable units in the next 10 years, but we also have to apply what I kind of call passive zoning to ensure that something called an unmet need can be accommodated for the next 10 years or beyond. And what that means is to have zoning that creates a realistic opportunity for some portion of the units that we don't actually have vacant land to accommodate. And so the formula for that is 25% of, well, you know, I'm not gonna do this math, but the formula for that is on the slideshow, and it results in a unmet need of 25 units. So in addition to having projects that can create 57 units by, 57 affordable units by 2035, we have to have zoning that creates a realistic probability for 25 additional affordable housing units. So what I, the way I like to think about it is that instead of planning for the 155 units that we settled with, with the courts, we're really looking for a plan that provides for 82 affordable housing units. So how do you create affordable housing? There's a few different ways. The most common way is what's called inclusionary development or inclusionary zoning, and that's where you have a largely market rate project that includes a portion of its units that are required to be available and restricted to low-income persons. So the standard is that if you have one of these projects, 15% to 20% of the units in that project have to be affordable, have to be restricted to income-qualified people. You can also partner with or help subsidize the creation of group homes or supportive housing for people with disabilities, disabled veterans, and other similar groups. Or you can do what the township did in the third round, which is contribute land and funding to create housing, such as what has been done at Verona Flats. There's something called bonus credits that used to just be applied to rental projects, but now there's a whole different, like seven categories of bonuses that you can get. You can meet up to 25% of your vacant land number, in this case, with these bonuses. So of the 57 units that we have to have a plan for to create by 2035, 14 of those are kind of, are bonuses. They're not real units. They're units that count as more than one unit. So depending on the situation, one actual affordable apartment can count as one and a half or two. So what is required to be in a plan? Well, there's the obvious. We have to say, here's our affordable housing number, here's how we're gonna meet it. Then there's some other pieces. We have to have a demographic and economic analysis, including an analysis of the housing stock and projections of how much housing and population may change over the next 10 years. We use a combination of what we're required to use, information on building permits and actual construction that's taking place at town. But otherwise, we use analyses from the U.S. Census Bureau and the Northern, North Jersey Transportation Planning Association, or Association Authority, which has projections through 2050. That's pretty typical how planners do this portion. And then we have to have other, meet other requirements, like identifying what projects may have been proposed to us, that we didn't include in the plan, what areas we're focused on to meet this housing obligation, whether we actually have sewer capacity to meet this obligation, and how we're gonna use affordable housing trust fund money to either meet certain requirements or advance the plan. And obviously, if we're talking about needing zoning or redevelopment plans, we have to show that those are real, that they are either in draft form or adopted. So over the last year, more than that, San, Kevin, occasionally myself, have met with interested developers who have come before the town saying that they want to, they have a property, they're interested in developing, they want to help us with our housing plan, as they like to say. And, you know, there've been negotiations to try and arrive at projects and zoning options that are palatable and help us meet our plans. So you have a table here that lists what are currently our plan is going to look like. There's going to be some changes between now and June 9th, when I'm gonna have the final version to you. If you go through the list, top to bottom, the TCMU overlay was a zone that the township was required to adopt in the third round. It did not actually count to your third round plan, and I'm not really sure how it ended up part of your settlement, but there was a caveat that you could use that in your fourth round, so that gives us 11 units right away that we can count in our plan. A couple of years ago, the township amended, I think it was the C2 zone, the C2 zone, to allow for assisted living on a, I'm sorry?
Conditionally.
Conditionally allow assisted living on a property on Grove Avenue, right by, there's an office building and it's right by your public works facility. That would allow up to 25 assisted living, affordable assisted living beds. Currently, due to the cap on how many senior or age-restricted units you can have in your plan, we're only counting five of those, and the rest you can bring into the next round, which will be lovely in 10 years when you're like, how are we gonna handle the fifth round? There's a redevelopment plan for 320 Bloomfield Avenue that'll create two affordable units. There's a tentative plan for Hillcrest Farm that includes one apartment for families or individuals who are income-qualified, and four bedrooms for individuals with special needs. There's a negotiations ongoing for redevelopment of the Richfield Regency site, 420 Bloomfield. We have shown here the, kind of the minimum number of units that the site will, that we can get from the site while meeting our obligation here. 176 Bloomfield Avenue, looking at four affordable units for families. 885 Bloomfield, also negotiations ongoing, but we're looking currently at potentially three special needs bedrooms and four apartments for families or individuals that are income-qualified. And finally, there's what? Third round, we got, we were able to use 59 of the 159 or so senior affordable units at the Hillwood site up on Fairview. We're counting eight of those for this round currently. Again, there's a cap on how many senior units we can use in our plan. We are eligible for 14 bonus credits, as I said, and I lay out in this table how we plan to maximize those bonuses, which means that our plan, as it currently appears, is gonna include 46 affordable units, 14 bonus credits, and that's gonna bring us at least 60 affordable housing credits against the 57-unit realistic development potential or vacant land number that we have to worry about for the next 10 years. We have also discussed removing the 50% split requirement for the TC zone for mixed use. Essentially, your ordinance had, has it been changed? Never remind me.
No.
It hasn't, okay. The ordinance currently says that if you want to do mixed use as conditional use in the TC zone, 50% of the square footage has to be non-residential and the other 50% can be residential. That is highly restrictive toward actual mixed-use development that would create affordable housing. So part of our plan is to eliminate that 50% split so that we can meet our 25 unit on that need in the TC zone. We have to, as part of our plan, project how much revenue the township is gonna take into its affordable housing trust fund over the next 10 years and commit to how we're gonna use that funding. We currently are projecting a surplus in funding, which we are working on ways to spend that money toward this plan, either to reduce the densities on one of the sites here or to work with a developer to have a special needs component in their, in their otherwise family development. And any excess units that end up in the plan, anything over the 57 units toward the RDP can be carried into the fifth round, which again, will be great in 10 years when we're scrambling to figure that out again. So again, tonight is just preliminary presentation of the plan. I've received comments from Ms. Pearson that I've responded to her on, that I've already started to incorporate into the final draft. Here tonight to take any other comments that you all may have, if you've had the chance to read the plan. We are shooting for a special meeting to adopt the plan on June 19th. After that, there's gonna be a meeting of the council on June 23rd to endorse the plan and adopt some other resolutions that they need to do in order to make the plan official and meet the statutory requirements. After, if the plan is adopted, we have 48 hours to submit it to the state, including the resolution adopting it, so that we can be declared compliant. And then there's gonna be a period from July 1st to August 31st where entities, individuals can challenge the plan. The statute says that the challenge has to be based on an allegation that the plan actually fails to hit our number, which I don't think is gonna be a problem. You can't be forced, it can't be a developer saying, hey, I wanted to have my site in your plan and you didn't give it to me. It has to be substantive claim that we have failed to meet our obligation. If such a challenge is successful, we have until December 31st to resolve it, and I believe we will be protected and able to do that. And any ordinances that are necessary to advance the plan, including zoning, have to be adopted by March 15th of 2026. The implementation of the plan will be in the hands of your administrative agent, Laura Mongello. Any applications for the projects that are identified in this plan are treated the same way as any other application for development. They have to come before you for approval against the zoning or redevelopment plans that they are based on. And the township has to commit to fund its obligations where relevant. That is a concern for the council, who has been apprised of their obligations with respect to that. So I know I just threw a lot at you. I promised the chairwoman that I would keep my presentation to less than 15 minutes. I'm not sure I did that, but here is the floor for all of you.
Okay, so I'd like to go around the table. I'm sure everybody had a chance to read this. Maybe not the new one, but the new one only swapped out the last bit, right? And changed a couple of details on the, a couple of the housing.
Yeah, it's just the table. We updated it.
All right, we're gonna, I would like to start with Ms. Parker. Do you have any questions or any comments or any suggestions for tweaks?
Uh, moment.
Okay. Mr. Katsev?
Thank you for putting this together. Just looking through this...
Could you get on your mic a little better? Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. So just looking through this again, on the required or kind of the target that you're getting to. So what happens if these, some of these properties are not developed? For example, the TCMU overlay? I mean, that's subject to people acquiring those properties and developing them. What happens if there's holdouts and they don't want to sell? So, and then, and then... want to sell? So, and then, and then follow on to the other property over here across the street. I mean, that's got issues. It's got essentially flooding and drainage issues. What happens if they don't get their permits from the DP or whomever, or they decide that, hey, I can't build all of these units on there? What happens then?
Right. So that's a really good question. So there's a couple of things. So first thing is, for every town, there's something called a midpoint review, and basically by July 2025, if we look back and, not 2025, 2030, if any component of this plan is not substantially moving along, if TCMU, as you said, doesn't seem like it's attracting any development, then the town would have to look at whether it needs to increase the density or replace that zone with another option of hitting, making those 11 units, or explaining why we think that it continues to be viable if, you know, maybe some things had started to take place and then a developer backed out for completely unrelated reasons to issues with the zone or the site. And the same goes for 885 Bloomfield, if, or any of these projects, if they find that they can't produce a number of units that are in the plan, or can't do anything, period. We either have to update the plan once and replace those projects with something, something more viable when we find out about it, or do an update at the midpoint. We've already, in respect to the site that you asked about, we had already been kind of clear in our discussions, and San can expand on that if necessary, that the, you know, the stormwater and other site constraints were a concern, and they've been responsive to that.
So I'd like to add more. So the plan that was, is prepared by DMR is, as per the statutes, you're required to have a plan in place, and it's very common, it's not typical to Verona, that maybe along the, you know, somewhere down the line, some projects fall, they don't come to fruition. It's perfectly normal. It's, it happens all the time. But I think what's important at this point is, do we have a plan that can provide realistic development opportunity? And what Dan has presented is, these are the various options. So just because we have an RDP of 57 doesn't mean all of those need to be developed in the next five years, but we need to have a solid plan in place.
Thank you.
No, that's fine. Just the plan doesn't address risks, and generally, I know, I'm in the business where you have to address risks also, so that's why my genesis of my question.
No, no, absolutely. And that, and your question, Jeremy, was a very good question, because obviously, what happens if things fail, right? So.
Thank you. I know their comments.
You good?
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Willie.
Yes, thank you for putting this together. Regarding the due dates, specifically with the land at the end of Commerce Court, that's being submitted for green acres, it's my understanding, maybe Mr. O'Sullivan can weigh in on this, that that hasn't gone through yet. How would that impact this application?
It won't. We've already actually brought this up before the judge in the discussion about the, the one, bringing your number down to 155. It's substantially along the way to being restricted, and I think there is a deed restriction already in place, even if Green Acres hasn't done, finalized their process. So it won't be a factor. We're already past the point of that being an issue. I don't foresee that coming, coming back, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, if, you know, on the process and what the thought or...
Jay, you're...
Sorry. Sorry.
Yeah.
Just what the thought in terms of timing on some of these draft, especially redevelopment plans, because we have a couple of sites where we're anticipating a redevelopment plan, but they're still in the draft phase. We haven't seen them yet.
Yeah.
I assume the plan is to just introduce and have the council endorse draft plans to submit on the 30th? Is that correct?
I'll let San speak to the timelines of the specific, the draft redevelopment plans, but yes, essentially, the, whatever draft redevelopment plans, ordinances that we have ready, prior to the adoption, is going to be included as evidence to the Affordable Housing dispute resolution program, basically showing these are real. For projects that are designated and don't have redevelopment plans, you know, I've been in touch with Beth McManus, who is the, once formerly known as your court master, now your special adjudicator in these affordable housing litigation matters, and she understands that most towns might not have everything, like these redevelopment plans fully in place, and we just need to document as much as possible that these are real, and then when, and then try to provide the redevelopment plans when they are further along. So I don't think, I think everybody's in the same situation. I think, am I answering your question?
Yeah, no, no, I understand what the process is in general, but just where are, where are we on some of these draft plans?
I can elaborate on.
You know, like 885 is not something we've really discussed at our meetings. It's kind of been something where it's like, all right, well, this is a piece of land that we need to address for RDP, but we've never really committed to including it in the plan. So I'm just kind of curious where we stand on that, and if we have a draft redevelopment plan, because I haven't seen it.
No, absolutely. So 420 and 885, the reason why no, no one has seen anything is because we're still in the negotiation phase.
No, and we've seen Richfield.
I understand your question is because on the chart, it says redevelopment plan, right?
It says redevelopment plan, and we've never, ever addressed that.
Yeah, so I want to, I want to, that should not say, that's confusing, because originally, my anticipation was that this project was just going to be, that we would, that we were just going to have the zoning for this. We didn't really know what the deal was going to be with the negotiations with the developer, but I would call this a development. I would say that this is in the same stage as any other site that's been designated as a redevelopment area that doesn't have a redevelopment plan. There's no redevelopment plan in place or written that, so I, I understand that that was confusing how it's in there. So just, you can, you can ignore that.
And the only thing that we, we will be able to include is the 320 Bloomfield, because we were supposed to hear that in December of last year.
Right.
So that's in a draft format, that is, it's public. The rest is still in a negotiation, but we have time until March, right, to do all of this? So we intend to continue and expedite it, but it's somehow, as you are well aware, it takes its own.
Yeah, no, I understand, but if we've got two sites that are up in the air, and we're, we're relying on, you know, 18 credits, you know, that kind of brings you back to Jeremy's point about risk mitigation and having a bit more redundancy in the plan in case some of these drop out, they're not feasible, they're not palatable.
Yeah.
So it's like, if one of them drops out, we've got to increase somewhere else.
Right, but you know, as you know, at this point, we have to look at what's, what's realistic today. So, you know, so there is also, and I'm not trying to scare anyone, but you're in this business, Jason, so you know, even if there's a plan in place, right, even if it's adopted, doesn't necessarily mean it will get developed. But the fact that there is something in place, there is, we have, we have, we have a rehab designation for the entirety of the corridor, which enables us to adopt redevelopment plans for sites as they open. We have a redevelopment investigation, which is a whole, you know, process for three sites at least at this point. So, you know, it's, I think the goal over here is to tell the courts or whoever that these are, these are viable projects. They, these present a realistic opportunity. That's all we're doing right now. By March, of course, we need to have plans in place.
Yeah. At this stage, the main thing that we need to focus on, because the time limit that the state gave us is absurdly short, is just showing that these are real, there's developers who are interested. And, you know, if they fall out of place, we resolve that with an update in the months or years that, that happens. Mr. I.
All right. First, a question. What is a special-needs bedroom?
Okay, so yeah, so that's, if you have a group home for adults with disabilities, for example, it's usually a house that's been converted for their purposes with ADA, et cetera. And for affordable housing purposes, each bedroom in that group home that's occupied by someone who is income-qualified and disabled counts as an affordable housing credit, accounts toward our plan. So rather than being like, you know, an apartment with the whole family, it's each bedroom in a group home. So.
Okay. But that would mean the house is set up to be a, you know, DBD house or something like that?
Exactly, yes.
That, in its entirety?
Yes.
Like, you know, I don't know, bedroom in a rental or something?
Well, occasionally you have like a group, sorry.
No, I'm talking to myself now, now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Occasionally you have providers who don't have a house, for example, or building, and they will rent out a few one-bedroom or studio apartments in an apartment building, and those would be the bedrooms in that case. So, not that, that's, that's a sort of extra information.
Would things like that apply, like, again, if they come up, if that's, you know, if we're looking for those bedrooms or seats or houses or whatever, is that, you know, if that special-needs bedroom is, somebody figures that out, does that, say in 2030, you know, hit our numbers, even if it's not in the plan right now?
Yeah, if something comes along and somebody wants to build it, and it, and they are subject to the state's income requirements for those kind of facilities, then yeah, we can update our plan, or we just put it in our back pocket for the fifth round, which will start in 2035. That's probably more likely how you're going to use it.
And just to add to Dan's point, these special-needs housing, the statutes are very specific as to what would qualify. So what Dan has been doing too is ensuring that it's as per whatever the state requirements are, like, you know, with your conversations with these certain.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're credible agencies, so I trust them. They know what they're doing.
Good. Second thing is, just on, on, all of these, these numbers are about future development and areas that would invite these. But what about, is there any clause in, in either the litigation or how you work on this, for let's say, you know, is it an apartment building and they want to, you know, they're doing market rate, but they want to just put, you know, I don't know, we could have a tax incentive program that says, if you do affordable housing on some units, you'll get, you know, X, Y, or Z.
Yeah, if there was a situation where a developer, a property owner or developer wanted to do that with an existing building, and they were willing to comply with all the various state requirements, and yeah, how often do people want to do that? Usually they're trying not to do affordable housing, so it's unlikely unless the town offers, or somebody offers them money. And, you know, we, I mentioned that we have a projected surplus of Affordable Housing Trust Funds that have to be spent on affordable housing purposes, but it's not nearly enough to make a huge difference in that direction.
And where I'm going with this is, like, let's say, you know, we're, we're in, you know, you're working in the corridor here for these new developments, but, you know, we want to preserve the character of the single-family or multifamily homes.
Yeah.
But say, you own one, your mortgage is paid, I don't know, you moved into Florida, and, you know, you can, you can afford an affordable rate to rent it out. Like, that seems like a space where, you know, we could extend into single-family homes, meet those our obligations, but not change the character of.
Yeah. In theory, yeah, that's, those are ways to do it. The reality, in reality, the, you know, it requires, usually requires the town to outlay a lot of money, and the amount of money that you'd have to lay out to make a dent, I don't think would be a good idea. So, yeah, and somebody can do it, but I don't think in our case it makes sense.
I'm just seeing for other ways. So last thing I'll ask on that then is, I have a notion of why this, which is what I believe if we're voting on anything, is, you know, matches our master plan. Can you tell me how this matches our master?
So I'm going to let San weigh in on the specifics of that, but I'll, I'll tell you that, well, you know, why don't you start, San? I'm going to let you start.
So as per the municipal land use law, we have written a master plan, our master plan, our master plan also made a reference to affordable housing. Affordable housing is a whole different, although the planning board is adopting it, it's a whole different animal, if you will. So what Dan is doing is the fair share plan, which is a whole different statute than what governs a master plan. It is very consistent with what we have recommended in the master plan. And frankly, as per the Fair Housing Act of 1985, every municipality has a constitutional obligation to provide affordable housing. So what happens is, what we will be adopting next month will be in tandem with our master plan. So our zoning ordinance for, has a policy framework from the master plan, right, the land use plan element, and any other affordable housing will, what the plan prepared by Dan will provide a policy framework. So both of them are in tandem with each other.
Yeah. I would just add that the housing plan is essentially an element of your master plan, but the, the hard thing to say is that, you know, the affordable housing rules and statute trump whatever your master plan says in a lot of ways. So, you know, I think a lot of this is consistent with the plan, in that most of this is taking place in the, along Bloomfield Avenue, and it's, you know, we're keeping out of your single-family neighborhoods, which is, you know, the first thing that you see in every master plan, keep your single-family neighborhoods preserved, et cetera. But that's the caveat.
That you just matched my thinking on this. So there, I asked that question just to hear that back. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor?
No, thank you.
So unless otherwise agreed to it, am I correct in assuming that these, all of these developments would be subject to the relevant ordinances and zoning restrictions that we have?
They're all, as far as I know, I can tell you, they're, they're all going to have their own redevelopment plans or zoning. TCMU is an existing zone, Grove Avenue has already got a zone. I think the rest of these are all going to be redevelopment plans. So they're all going to be different from, separate from your regular zoning, except where the redevelopment plans defer to your current zoning.
Okay. And this is, this is probably a dumb question, but AHUs, they always have to be rentals?
No.
They don't?
They don't.
Then how come you really don't see ones that you only, I've only seen rentals?
Yeah, the, 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 for sales are, are, I don't know if it's that they are less profitable, or if it's that they are just, you know, more out of reach for a lot of low-income folks, because you still need a down payment and security, or not the security deposit, down payment, clothing costs, et cetera. So it's just not super common. Especially in a, in a community like Verona, where you're trying to do these in your, in your core, your downtown, and, you know, you're doing apartments, you just don't see a lot of developers wanting to do condos.
And I can actually elaborate because of the, so the town, the town has to work for, before I came to H2M, my department did administration. And one of the things, I'm sorry?
No, no.
You remember that. You remember that, right? So one of the things our experience has been with owner occupied, right? Is as the value of housing, and especially Verona, which is in a more expensive area of the state, as the value of the housing increases, it becomes very difficult for anybody who wants to, it it's easier for them to rent than actually buy. So what we faced over that was, and I'm talking about, I've been with H2M for four years, so I'm talking about the time in like, you know, from 2015 to 20 before the pandemic. So really, 10 years ago, where the property values in suburban communities was not as inflated as it is today. And yet, if somebody sold their house, it would be very difficult to resell it to somebody else. So that was one, a huge struggle. So for anyone who's trying to create these kind of for ownership, it's the cost is prohibitive. And then for a town, you just have this housing and nobody's using it. So rentals are preferred for, that's one of the many reasons why rentals are preferred.
I guess it's a catch 22, though, because you're not putting inventory, like this low entry level inventory into the market for people to buy. And it's just leasing opportunities, and then it doesn't create any inventory for people to. Yeah, I guess it's a.
You're 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 100% correct in saying it's it's a self perpetuating problem.
It is, and unfortunately, you know, we have to, every mechanism that Dan's talking about, we have to follow exactly what the state tells us. But then, you know, in terms of, in terms of how they get built, it's the market that decides it.
Yeah. Thank you.
I mean, that that and a discussion that Mr. Masara and I had a couple of years ago about the expiration of these units in their, after their 30 year, you know, restriction. Is there any way that we could write into the developers agreement of some of these that they have to renew once, so that would give us 60 years? You know, on some of these units? Because then I I know that rehab will happen and, but would there be a willingness, do you think, for some sort of developers agreement to require at least one renewal? I don't know, is this ever done?
So, you know, this is more developers agreement is more a legal question. But has it ever, has it been done? Yes, it's been done. So there were, the there, so we have first the COA regulations. Then after that, once the housing gets built, we have what they call the UAC regulations. And there were many in the past, and this has been my experience in 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 my prior position in one of my towns where, you know, there were all these second round, second round housing, which is now expiring, because it's been, it's been many years. What you cannot mandate them to renew it, but you can definitely, there is an option of extension of expiring controls that you can definitely do. It has been done in, we're currently working for, in one of my towns with with those affordable housing that were a part of the second round. Can you write that in the in the development agreement? I am not an attorney, but based on just my experience, it's not, I've nev- I've not seen it, but I will defer to Jamie, who's our affordable housing, or Greg and Brian.
Is it done? Have you ever seen it done?
No.
No, because generally speaking, what Dave also said was it's a self perpetuating problem, we know this. But in 30 years, they're going to condo wise and sell those units at market rate. And so the people that were renting them at a whatever ridiculous rate is considered reasonable in 30 years, they're they're not going to have that option ever, you know.
So I I want to talk about that too, that there is something called as a 95-5 rule, where like the UAC regulation, a regulation from 2006 say have that, and I've seen that in deed restrictions in my prior job and the one that I'm working on right now, where it says that if you're, when your controls expire, you have to reach out to the town first. So you can put that kind of language in the in in the deed restriction or development agreements, and then there's that percentage. So say, for example, a unit was sold at 100,000, I'm just putting a number out there. Now it's it's a million, doesn't mean that the guy gets 900,000. He gets, he gets whatever his share is for that affordable housing, and the remainder goes back to the municipality. Greg, if I'm wrong, correct me, but that's my understanding.
Yeah, that's that's correct, that's for for sale, though. But I think, Jess, you were talking about just the the ones that we're doing now.
The rentals? So for rent.
Well, you can only, we can only put stuff in the redevelopment agreement that we're negotiating now.
Well, that's my point, that's why I brought that up.
I mean, you can, if you get a developer who agrees, but the developers have all the leverage.
Yeah.
I mean, so if the developer's not not going to agree.
Well, maybe.
I I can answer the rental portion. So with the rental portion, what happens is what we we've tried to do with in the past is reach out to, so the town that I used to do this, they had an accessory apartment program, which was the model, after which like COA started adopting that in their regulations. So those accessory apartment units, they have a minimum tenure. But if you have enough money in your affordable housing fund, you could reach out to those owners well in advance, saying, can you then expand on? Like, I'm talking about, my experience has been with the accessory ones, but but that, but the same rule applies. So if you have enough monies in the trust fund, you can help them subsidize that. So it it has been done, but you do not plan this. It's it's, you cannot, it's I, it's unheard of. Let me rephrase, put my, put the right language, unheard of, of doing that at the development agreement stage.
But there is that, that, I guess you'd call it a first right of refusal in the in the lease, where they, you know, we, the the developer or owner prior to the expiration could bring it up to the town, and the town can intervene in some kind of way. But yeah, it involves money, usually.
And usually if it's subsidized and you continue to subsidize.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to just quickly, well, first, going back to a game plan, but then I want to address a couple of things in the plan. Because there are things that are not completed in this, and they need to be completed by the ninth, I would like to request a final subcommittee meeting to ensure that everything is the way that we think it should be during the week of the second. I I don't know if that fits in with the, I mean, we're almost, that's not this Monday, which is Memorial Day, but the following Monday is the second. So I mean, I I don't know what, Jason, your availability might be in the afternoons. But I don't, the bottom line is, right now, 380 383 Bloomfield Avenue, which is Hillcrest, is not in the body copy of this. There are some erroneous figures and and statements in there that I know that you're going to address. And the map, which I located more problems with that map, where I I identified.
The one that was blurry?
No. Map number two. I sent you a bunch of labels.
Oh, that one, yes, 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 yes.
I mean, I don't know where you, why did you think that those properties were tax exempt?
I didn't, they are, they come from the, those maps, the land use maps are based on the tax assessors data, so that's public.
Claridge House better be paying taxes, and and Wedgewood Drive, and.
Yeah, so if it's if it's an HOA, it's it's treated, it's usually classified as tax exempt.
We have to reclassify every single one of those as multifamily. We also have Black for no data on Anan.
Yeah.
On single family use homes up on Darrell, where single family homes were done, and Verona Flats, right here, is no information.
Yeah, I can, I can go through and make those two, those tweaks.
So what I'm going to request, I I would like to set a meeting up for, I, you know, I guess as late in the week as possible, that could accommodate you. San, Mr. O'Sullivan, the mayor, if he can please make it, obviously our attorney and Mr. Heineman. For the final ones, you know, just any con, any final comments? When do you think you could get it back to us by borrowing a couple of, you know, hard figures? We we understand there might be a couple of numbers that may not be firmed up yet, but.
Is June, is Thursday, is the 29th okay, Thursday?
Sorry, say that again, hon?
The Thursday, the 29th, is that okay?
Oh, I was saying, like, the week of the 5th, like, the week of June 1st.
Oh, that week?
Oh, you're saying when you could get it to us?
I think, just just to be clear, we're talking about, we were talking about having the the subcommittee meeting on the 2nd, so, but you're asking about maybe doing that the the week after, correct?
I would say get us the plan maybe by the 30th. Where are we? That that's a, that's a week and a day, that's eight days.
Yeah.
And then we set up the meeting. I don't, is there any day in particular during that first week of June that is terrible for anybody?
I'm.
Okay.
Friday night.
Okay, I'm out too.
At a bar.
Let's hold it at the bar.
If we do it at the beginning of the week, it gives, if there's any final comments.
Okay, so, you know.
You could Monday the 2nd.
Monday, the 2nd is fine.
Yeah.
Jay, does that work for you?
That's fine, as long as it's not.
So do you want to do a 3:30? In and out? Three. 3:30 or 4, 3:30? Do 3:30?
Let's hold for three, I got a hold, I'm putting in a hold on 3:30, so whatever time works for everybody else.
And I'll ask Kathleen to set that up on Zoom. Okay. Yeah, because there were some number changes in that chart from what we had been looking at that I had never seen before. And one question I will ask right now is, how did we end up with a reduction of units at Grove Avenue? Oh, you, I heard you address it really quickly before.
Okay, right, so the the reduction on Grove Avenue is because there's we, there's a cap on how many senior units that you can include in the plan, and that's 13 units. Based on the, we're saying that we're going to have a minimum of 46 affordable units in the plan. So 30% of 46 rounding is 13. So what I, what I wanted to do was maximize, I wanted to have a balance between maximizing what we claim from Hillwood and make taking, making use of Grove Avenue, because Hillwood, I I don't, nobody knows if, well, I don't know personally if it's going to continue to have the, have affordability controls on it in 2035. And I would like to, for us to take advantage of how many senior units are in there.
Currently.
Currently.
Yeah.
So rather than.
You switched it over, is that what you did?
I switched it over, basically.
Thank you.
I I that that's basically it. I I didn't want to go zero on Grove Avenue, because we we took the time to to zone it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's the answer.
Okay, and the 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 885 is definitely, it feels very big. I understand the acreage involved there, but the concern of mine was the concern I had publicly when this property was discussed as to whether it qualified as an area need. And I believe two people on this dais voted no, and we're still here. And because we found the property, from my humble perspective, to be unfit for development, steeply sloped, and basically has a waterway running through it, that used to be a railroad line. So I I am a little concerned seeing those numbers in in there, and that's the first I've seen those.
Okay.
I don't think that that was included in our, in the last spreadsheet that we had.
It was, but it was kind of, it was a lower number based on the analysis that San had done a while back, based on the, I think, we we had, we had applied it from the master plan, yeah, 19 units.
Yeah, that that looks a little lofty, if if you ask me. Also, the property is very narrow. So just just expressing a little concern there.
Understood.
There's still, there's still, we're still, Kevin, myself and Dan, we're still in negotiation with them. What they had originally presented was at least two, I would say, more than.
There's one and a half.
One and a half or two times what what that, no, 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 what that originally presented was at least two, twice what we brought them down to. And another thing is that we've asked them to provide us with, how are you, A, fitting all the units? Number two, how are you going to provide all the parking? How are you going to keep the character of the neighborhood? How are you going to buffer from everything around you? So those are the few points that we raised. And, you know, once we get those numbers or their concept plans, we'll be sitting down with them and discussing. But for our purposes, we do need to provide these number of units. And it just makes sense, having this then along the corridor, then tapping into other areas.
No, I I hear you. I mean, and I guess the last question is, what's your schedule insofar as getting, firming any of these numbers up with Kevin and getting them over to Dan?
We we keep, we, my my schedule is dependent on when we get those concept plans right from the developer, but the one.
Do they, do they know that we're dealing with a very serious deadline? Okay.
Everybody's aware of that.
Okay.
And just so that you understand, we have an internal communication. So when Kevin and I meet with people, we, whatever's discussed is sent in an email, Dan's aware. So we keep each other in in the loop. So, you know, it's so that there's no communication gap and he doesn't have erroneous information. One of the reasons why Dan also wanted me to be part of all this discussion is that, you know, it's all out there in the open, every, you know, we all discuss this, there's no miscommunication.
Okay.
Yeah, and and just in terms of the firming of the final numbers, again, something that I discussed with your your special master, Beth McManus, is is that, you know, when we have these 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 pending kind of deliberative concepts, what we're going to show in the plan is not what the final numbers are, but that any one of these, every one of these projects will have the minimum number of of units that we need to comply. So.
Okay.
And we're going to be clear that with with, you know, 885 and and Richfield and whoever else, that there's still negotiations, concepts that we have, may have to include in the evidence to show that these are things that are actually in process, are going to be clear that they're deliberative, they aren't the final product. So we're not held to anything other than saying that these are the projects in our plan and, you know, and as we said, if we have, if things, if any of them fall out, we'll update them, the plan as needed.
So just to follow along with that, so with 885, for for whatever reason, wasn't able to.
So just to follow along with that, so with 885, for, for whatever reason, wasn't able to contribute anything, would we still, still be okay with our other numbers?
Um, 885 didn't contribute anything, we would have to replace it at least in part. Have to replace, replace the project at least in part. Like you may not have to get every single affordable unit that it's currently being claimed there, but we'd have, if, if we lost it, uh, the plan would have to be revisited.
That somewhat contradicts though what you said when I asked the, the same question.
What was it? What was that?
You said that, uh, you know, that projects don't always come to fruition and that you can reevaluate the plan.
Yeah, it, it, I thought it is. This sounds like the same question though, isn't it? That, that in, if it were to, to, if, if like what you said, if they weren't to come to fruition, I think my answer to you was that we'd have to reevaluate the plan at that stage, which was.
Right, but you never, but now you're saying if they replace them outright, that contradicts what you said.
No.
No, he's saying if we take it out of the plan.
Oh, take it out of the plan. Okay.
Like if we preemptively.
Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's different cases. If, if, if in, if, if uh, June 2026, 885, uh, says, uh, we're not, we're pulling our application or whatever, we have to rewrite, we have to rewrite, write our plan. If, if they, if we, uh, negotiations fall apart, uh, before June 30th, we have to figure out how to re- replace them. So no matter what, anything that doesn't, that is clearly not going to pan out has to be replaced.
Okay. I misunderstood them, but I'm still.
Yeah, sorry.
I still have the same concern around the lack of kind of risk mitigation.
Uh, what was that?
I still have a concern around the lack of risk mitigate, risk, risk mitigation highlighted in the plan.
Yeah, uh, uh, understood. You mean in terms of having a buffer or?
A buffer or contingency plans? What if this doesn't happen?
Yeah.
What are the responsibilities? Who's responsible?
I mean, it, it, there are contingencies to an extent, but you don't want to, we, you don't lay everything out into the plan because once it's in your plan, it has to be done. So the plan is shows what you have to do right now, or what we're saying we, we need to do to, to hit the number. And if anything falls out, um, you know, whatever alternative options we've discussed, we, we, we revisit.
Okay.
Danny, you can go back.
Um. You could go back and add some to Grove, is that correct?
Add more units in.
Not more units, but you, you had said that you, you allocated.
So, uh, yes and no. Um, if, if we were, uh, let me, let me, so if, if, if we currently have, uh, based on 46 affordable units in our plan, the, we're, we're allowed to make 13 of those seniors. So if we lose the six or seven affordable units that are shown in 885, we can only use 30% of 39. So it's, it's not so much that we can add units.
It's actually, okay, understood.
It's kind of a domino effect.
Gotcha, okay.
One unit goes out, the senior units go away.
Yes.
Had, had you ever considered family units to occur within that same development, special needs?
Uh, in, in Grove Ave?
Correct.
Um. Well, the issue is Grove Ave already has zoning for.
Yeah.
Right.
For seniors.
So you're talking about amending the zoning?
So you'd have to mend the zoning. Um, Hillwood's already built. That's senior. That's maxing out our senior credits. We're proposing, we're proposing Richfield to be, that's senior as well, but that's.
Family.
It's family?
But, but I get what, what, what Jess is saying is.
I'm, I'm saying to expand our, our ability on that.
Yeah, have a, have a, an option on Grove Avenue of, of, you know, uh, an alternative to assisted living, doing family or.
Not even an alternative, in addition to.
Okay.
I don't know what kind of room is available, but I guess my question was, it's going to be, uh, you know, a, a living situation development whereby there could be special needs, living, um, arrangements. I'm sorry?
In separate housing?
Yeah, like on the same site.
In the same site.
So I'm, I'm just suggesting that maybe that, I call it a mixed use. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Uh, inter.
As a contingency. To, to Jeremy's point, that would certainly expand the ability, if there was room on the site, to, um, not only score credits, but also score units.
Um, so. Yeah, that's, that's a, that's an interesting thought. You know, I think that's something for, uh, uh, you know, we, we could uh, bounce around with San and then Kevin. Uh, the, uh, one thing that I would make note of with something like that is when, you know, when Grove Avenue and TCNU overlay are the two zones that don't actually have a developer. And when there's not actually a developer for, for it, you don't get the benefit of bonuses. So we would be glad we could get, I think I'm showing five bonus credits from, from Bloomfield right now. Uh, we'd have, we'd lose that benefit. Um, we'd have to make up for it with more units on Grove Avenue. So the answer is yes, but you, but you have to use more real units instead of bonuses.
Correct. And my, and the other thought I have that, you know, also multi-generational households or something, that multi-generational households are what the new legislation is encouraging. I think it is also, um, it, it makes sense to think about, okay, we have a zoning in place that would permit assisted living, but if they, if we were to change it, I'm not sure if it would provide a realistic opportunity for, um, the special needs unless we do a combination. We'll have to think about it. You know, because at the end of the day, we want to, uh, get credits that then our court master would also recommend. So that's something I would be careful about, you know, because our goal is to tell that this is our realistic development potential and here's how we're trying to satisfy it.
Okay. And I was just exploring.
No, no, of course. No, no, I, please don't, uh, uh, misunderstand me. I'm not trying to.
Jess, just ask.
Huh? Don't hold back. Nobody should hold back. That's why we're both here.
Yeah, because that, that, that's an interesting, um, well, that's an interesting alternative to consider if, if we have to fall back on it.
But you're right, but that, that's something we should just have it in our back pocket.
Exactly.
Because right now we need, um, like realistic projects.
Is there a developer for 885?
Well, there's an owner.
There's an owner, right. But is there realistic development?
There is an owner. Uh, he has a developer, right? So there are, each of these projects have come with the owner and the developers.
So I mean, you know, you brought it up, that's, that's, that is a, a risky concern that could be litigated. I know there'd be a crowd here that could be going on for a long time. There would be a chance we'd be hitting our, uh, you know, fifth round before that goes around. And no, and I mean that, as funny as it is, is because it's true. So, and, and knowing that the shape of that land, I, you know.
Yeah. Well, well, obviously, and like I said, any, any, any project in this plan has to come before you. Uh, and I think we all know that when, uh, a developer is before a planning board and there's an army of neighbors behind them who, who are complaining, they, they often will give concessions. Whether or not they're satisfactory is a whole other.
Dan, I don't agree with you because once they get a redevelopment plan from our town council.
That's a fair point, yes, yeah.
And they, you know, that, then they come in and they go.
Yeah.
And there's very little wiggle room away from that. So it kind of, the negotiations sort of have to happen prior to the councils.
Of course, understood, yeah.
Strong negotiations that aren't going to like send ripple effects through the town.
So another thing I also want to add to this is, um, I, I hear you and I understand exactly what you, um, and I would like to keep it very general because this, it's, you know, right now. Um, but one of the things I want to also find out that if your redevelopment plan says, um, these many units, this, that and the other, whatever it is that it will be saying, uh, just know that DEP trumps that. So for, uh, DEP regulations trumpet. Um, you, you know, when you reference that, okay, you can put all of this as long as you're compliant with whatever the DEP regulations are, whatever the town stormwater management regulations are. And when they actually do write the plan, because the redevelopment plan works as a, works as a ordinance. So when we put density, we put, uh, you know, setbacks, this, that and the other, um, in an ordinance. But they also have to, uh, fulfill the stormwater management regulations. They also have to fulfill if there are any wetlands or, or steep slopes, of course, local, not as a, as a DP level. But if they're wetlands or if there are every, anything else that are constraints, they have to satisfy all of that. So just because, um, and I've actually seen this in an affordable housing, um, you know, plan that, that we had written, uh, for the first iter- uh, second iteration of the third round in 2008, which, uh, put in a density of 12 dwelling units per acre, uh, for a particular site. And by the time it came before the planning board in 2016, which, or 17, mu- much later, it had actually reduced to around six or seven dwelling units per acre because there were other constraints where they couldn't provide adequate parking, they couldn't provide, uh, enough, uh, you know, stormwater management. So at the site plan level, they, you know, that's when they need to provide actual engineer drawings. But, you know, so.
That could change. You're just saying that could change.
Yes, because, uh, just because there's a redevelopment plan in place doesn't mean they, uh, you don't comply with the DEP regulations and DEP regulations as time is passing by, getting more and more stringent.
Right.
Right? So there are other checks and balances in place. But at this point, what we are trying to tell, uh, DCA and the state is, look, this is our obligation. We don't have vacant land. This is our RDP. This is what, uh, on June 30th, 2025, we think is a realistic opportunity. Right?
Are there any further questions or comments? If not, um, we will, I just want to confirm, has everybody replied to Kathleen about their availability on the 19th for the special meeting? Okay, and, and just the 20, I know you can't make it. The 26th, you don't have to come either because it's Wedgwood.
Right.
I'm just keeping you posted. Um, but pretty much everybody else can be here for the adoption. It's, it's really important that we have a forum. So, um, great. And we'll talk. I'm getting your cell number.
Okay, great.
Um, motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.